Live from the WKRG News 5 studio. You're watching the Mobile City Council Candidate Forum for District 6. Sponsored by Mobile United, the League of Women Voters, AFC Mobile, AT&amp;T, and Dorset Productions.
Hello everyone and welcome to tonight's City Council District 6 Forum. I'm Dana Winter. This is the sixth of seven City Council debates we're bringing you to get you ready for the August 24th election. Our council debates are sponsored by the League of Women Voters, Mobile United, Mobile AFC, AT&amp;T, and Dorset Productions. District 6 is located in West Mobile with the Devonshire Millhouse, Rolling Acres, Claremont Overton, Berkeley Timbers, and West Hill Communities. Councilwoman Bess Rich is stepping down from her seat, meaning District 6 will have a new representative. The candidates are arranged in alphabetical order left to right on your screen. They are Tony Dugaisch, Scott Jones, Darrell Pendleton, and Josh Woods. Here are the ground rules for tonight. The candidates do not know the questions they will be asked tonight. They will have 30 to 45 seconds for their answers. There will be no rebuttals. We ask the candidates to answer the question being answered. We will rotate the order in which the candidates answer the questions at the end. Candidates will be allowed to make a one-minute closing statement. All right, let's get started. We start with question number one. We're going to start with Tony. Crowded roads. Let's start with the district-specific question this evening. District 6 has grown tremendously in recent years, meaning the roads have become congested, much more congested. Airport Road installed a traffic light system to try and make commutes easier for residents. What's your opinion on the success of that project? And would you consider bringing that method into more District 6 areas? For example, around the area around South Alabama?
I agree 100%. Traffic is the biggest issue in District 6. We have to establish much more effective traffic system in District 6. Talking to the police officials. The system that we have is outdated. With the traffic engineers, they understand that we have to have a better system. We have to implement it if we're going to have a better traffic in District 6. Over 24 people died from traffic accidents. And the majority of these accidents because of the traffic is not being updated. So that's something is very important, and we have to use the same methods that they use on Airport Boulevard.
All right. Next, we're going to move to Scott Jones. Same questions, and you will also have 45 seconds.
Yes, thank you. This of course is a very important issue for our district. You cannot drive downhill crest, especially when you get to Grill Lot and Cottage Hill, without experiencing major delays as you go home from work at 5:00 PM or head to work in the mornings. With that said, Bess Rich has addressed this, and she's worked with the traffic engineers with this specific issue in the past. She has put forth methods that will help alleviate that. We need to continue that. It is going to take a community effort. It's going to take a traffic engineering department effort with Jennifer White. It's going to take some new technology, as been mentioned already. And it's going to be a collective approach that makes that better.
All right, and we'll move on now to Darrell Pendleton.
Thank you. I don't know how I can say anything much different, but I do agree that it's a problem and that we need to work on it and try to make things better. I think the systems they have on Airport Boulevard, I'm the person that experienced better traffic flow use of that one. So I see how that could help in our district more specifically. And then, you know, just having our drivers be more alert and they can help out a little bit by, you know, their own driving habits. Thank you.
And now Josh Woods.
Well, first off, thank you to Mobile United. Also, thank you WKRG, the League of Women Voters, and also to you Dana for moderating for us tonight. Whenever we entered in the campaign, whenever we said we were going to run, we identified major issues in the district, got a lot of input from our neighborhood captains, also from our experiences. And one of the top ones, one too, was traffic in the district. Really, that's a quality of life issue. And that's one thing that while we say it's been addressed and it's been brought to the table, let's be honest, it hasn't been fixed. And so, as part of my platform, part of something I'm running on is we want to make sure that that gets fixed. The squeaky wheel gets the grease a lot of times.
All right. Our next question deals with development in District 6. More housing developments are coming to District 6 when there is not much space left to build. So how would each of you balance bringing in more businesses to the area also with the growing population? Let's start with Scott for this question.
You know, this is an extremely important issue for us. I met with the Chamber of Commerce President, Vice President, Chief Operating Officer about a week ago, and we talked about this issue. And they're spending millions of dollars to bring quality jobs into Mobile. And, you know, I talk to residents every night, and one of the key issues they have is kids graduating from universities that are local and keeping them here. So there are plans in place to address that. We have an entrepreneurial center that Bester Ward is heading up and leading that effort. And, you know, KIV just started a technology integration corporation with the state that we need to tap into. And there's absolutely exciting opportunities on the horizon for that, and we'll tap into those.
All right, Darrell, same question.
Yes, it's an issue that, you know, needs to be addressed. And I think there are things in place, you know, to kind of head us in that direction. So we don't so much need to reinvent the wheel as we need to kind of fit into the things that are in place. And then if we need to make some adjustments to help, you know, move it forward, that would be a good thing. But housing and development is definitely something that's needed in this district, and we need to work on it.
All right. Josh, same question. You also have 45 seconds.
Thank you. Obviously, development and housing, that's one of those things that you have to balance back and forth. District 6 was one of the only districts over the last 10 years that's grown. So that obviously means that people are moving to District 6, they're raising their families in District 6. I know me and my wife are doing that. So finding that way that we continue to develop and also grow in District 6, that's not really just specific to District 6 as well. I mean, we have to look towards things like annexation. That's going to be a major part of what we're talking about, I'm sure, tonight. Annexation's a way that we grow and continue to grow the city and provide houses. Grew up in Mobile, had the opportunity to go to South Alabama, graduated in 2009 with my wife. And we decided we wanted to raise our family here. And District 6 is where we turned, so definitely realize the struggles of housing and development in that area.
All right. Tony, finally, same question.
District 6 is the newest district in Mobile. We always look for more development. When you have less area to develop, you need to find more areas. So that's why we have to look for annexation. And the lines for the annexation, it happened to be the closer to District 6. Talking to the Chamber of Commerce, talking to developers around the city on a day-to-day for the past 90 days, we can do a lot in District 6. We can bring more development to that area if we have that annexation. If the annexation will pass, District 6 will grow, and we will have much better subdivisions and much better area for District 6 to grow.
Everyone pretty much mentioning annexation. Funny enough, that is our next question. Annexation is the topic. In 2019, for the first time ever, the City Council voted against allowing about 13,000 people living west of the city to vote on annexing into Mobile. The majority of those residents are why the vote against annexation was on racial lines. Do you favor annexation, and what are your thoughts on annexation in general? This will also be a 45-second answer, and we will start with Darrell.
Thank you. I was somewhat involved, we're not involved in the decision-making, but at least with the happenings of that annexation conversation, I personally, with the information that I have, favor annexation. And I just think that the city has to grow, and by bringing in more people and bringing in the numbers in, it's going to help the city bring in more revenue. The rebuttal on the other side was that it's not helping our side of the city to grow, which, you know, that may have been a short-term result. I think in the long term, everybody would benefit from it. So sometimes we can be a little narrow-minded, shortsighted, and if we hurry to make decisions, which I think they felt like the decision was being rushed for some reason, and they didn't understand that. So that's kind of how it got brought it down. But I think German-speaking annexation is good.
All right. Josh Woods, same question, and you will also have 45 seconds to answer.
I appreciate it. So I've been involved in annexation, involved in the organization that voted to voluntarily annex into the city. So definitely familiar with growing the city and how we need to function and grow that way. From day one of the campaign, I've been pro-annexation. I realize that the growth of Mobile, the growth of the city of Mobile is really an equation. Part of that is to grow within. So we have to do everything we can as city council members, coming together, building consensus on the city council in order to provide for the city as is and to continue to foster growth, whether that's business or residential. But also realizing that there's another part of the equation, so we can equal a better, excellent future in Mobile. And that other part of the equation is annexation. We have to have people. We have to have a taxpayer base. We're already providing some services out there. Might as well continue to provide those services and take advantage of the full base of tax out there. So very pro-annexation.
All right. Tony, same question, and you will also have 45 seconds to answer.
The growth for Mobile for the past 47 years is 2,000 residents. So if we're going to grow, we have to annex. We have to add some space. And with that comes millions of dollars from the federal government. But the core of the question you asked, what is the black vote on the annexation? Let's focus on that part. If we get millions of dollars from the federal government, it's going to subsidize some of the houses. Also, you're going to have low-budget resident going to move into that area. In the same time, there will be a lot of developers with so many different ideas. But how can you stop the growth of a city? So I'm for it 100%.
All right. And finally, Scott, we will give you 45 seconds to answer the same question on annexation.
Thank you. Look, annexation must happen. If we're not growing, then we're dying. The color of our skin should not be what dictates how our city functions and grows. That's a sure way to divide and destroy this city. Look at Snow Road and Airport 35 years ago. I lived out there. It was pine trees and pasture. Look at it today. Strip malls, grocery stores, banks, schools, houses. We missed out years ago, and we're missing out today. If we don't move in the very near future, Theodore and Sims will and will be left behind. We have to move out. We also have to make sure that people have the right to vote. The City Council got that wrong the last time, and if it's up to me, West Mobile will have the right to vote for annexation.
Our next question is our fourth question. It is the biggest issue facing the district. So we're going to ask each of you what you think the biggest issue is that's facing District 6. Why is it the biggest issue, and what can be done about it? Each of you will be given 30 seconds to answer this question, and we will start this series of questions with Josh Woods.
So obviously, the biggest issue in District 6 that we've talked about, we've identified, the biggest issue is traffic. It's a twofold issue. It's a public safety issue, it's a quality of life issue. Traffic in the district causes traffic to flow through neighborhoods, provide unsafe environments in our neighborhoods, and potentially make for unsafe areas for us to live. So solving the core issue of solving the traffic issue at the major arteries, and then looking at our neighborhoods and determining whether or not we need to do, we need to take further action, whether that's a speed bump or what that looks like, a cul-de-sac, you know, or a roundabout, I'm sorry, that's really our major issue. Everything stems from traffic that I've identified.
Same question. We will move on to Tony. You all also have 30 seconds to answer. What do you think the biggest issue is facing District 6?
The biggest issue facing District 6 for the past 21 years I've been living here, and living in District 6 for the past 12 years, is the traffic. When you talk to the officers in the police department, they will tell you, our system needs to be updated. For the past 12 years, we have the same problems. I, as a city council, will resolve this problem. Everybody will make promises, but to resolve this problem, we have to have much better advanced traffic system in the city, and definitely in District 6.
Moving on to Scott Jones. You will get the same question, same 30 seconds to answer. What is the biggest issue facing District 6 and why?
Thank you. Infrastructure is our biggest issue. It's not just traffic. It is roads, it's drains, it's traffic lights, it's parks, it's sidewalks. Imagine what Medal of Honor Park would look like today if Bess didn't have access to the funds, the CIP funds she put into it. Just last week, the splash pad stopped working again. That's a huge quality of life issue for the couples with small kids who love that park. What about all the neighborhoods that I've walked where they say how awesome the sidewalks are that Bess got done with the CIP funds? So all of those are not going to go away. They're still going to be there, and it's why we must take care of all of the infrastructure. Thank you.
Darrell Pendleton, same question. You will also have 30 seconds to answer the biggest problem you see facing District 6 and why.
I think, as has been stated already, that the traffic is one of the biggest issues. I think I've been hearing a lot more about the annexation, which we've already discussed. But I think between those two things, that could help some with the traffic issues, possibly. And people are just, you know, sometimes frustrated easily, which is understandable. And so having traffic issues is something that, you know, we definitely have to take care of.
Our next question has to deal with the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan. It uses money from penny sales tax, dividing it evenly among the seven districts for infrastructure projects. Is it fair for older parts of the city, and what changes, if any, would you make to this arrangement? This will also be a 30-second answer for this one. For this one, we will also start with Josh Woods.
So we'll just go ahead and lay this out there. The CIP is funded from a penny sales tax that was temporary, and apparently it's been extended. You know, I have no problem with the CIP tax as long as it's being used efficiently. And again, that's for infrastructure. Let's describe infrastructure. Infrastructure streets, infrastructure traffic issues, infrastructure sidewalks. If it's being funded or being used outside of the infrastructure without addressing the priorities in our district, which a lot of times I believe that it is, then I believe we have to go back to the drawing board and kind of rethink of what needs to be done and prioritize our projects.
Darrell Pendleton?
I think that, I think I heard the question, is it fair as compared to other districts? You know, that's really going to depend on who you're talking to and the people. You know, some other districts have issues with their roads and things of that nature, whereas maybe District 6 may not still have as much of an issue with that. I think certainly there's more money needed to take care of the needs of the people in the entire city of Mobile. But in order to be fair, sometimes it would seem that, and you know, I know some people probably disagree with me, if there's excess, not necessarily excess, but there can be help from one district to another. I think if all the districts work together, we can also take care of each other.
Scott Jones?
I'm glad that, excuse me, glad that one person out of the two changed their mind about giving away the CIP funds. They must remain in this district. It is fair for District 6 to keep the taxpayer funds that they pay into it. While many of the other districts do have issues due to the fact that they're older, we're still 50 to 70 years old in most of our neighborhoods, and we demand as much attention as other districts in the city. In addition, the other districts have the ability to obtain grants that we do not. Bess has done an outstanding job of utilizing our resources widely to address issues. She's improved the road sidewalks, Medal of Honor Park, and other facilities, and those still have to be done. Thank you.
And Tony Dugaisch?
Bess advocated for $6 million on her last campaign. And we still, after four years, eight years, we are still getting the same amount of money, which is $3 million. The major issue we have is 70% of the people who live in District 6, they are white-collar workers. We pay the higher taxes comparing to other districts. So we have to have more money for District 6. The CIP $3 million is not going to be enough to maintain the district. We have to have more money. If we are paying them more taxes, we have to get more money for the district.
Our next question also dealing with the Capital Improvement Plan for District 6. What are your priorities in District 6 for capital improvement money? This round will be 45 seconds for each answer, and we will begin with Darrell.
Capital improvement plans for District 6 obviously is housing and developing more housing, which we've already talked about. I would plan to work with the council and the mayor in developing those plans, or if they already have plans in place, reviewing those and making sure that they're, you know, appropriate for our district so that, you know, we can do work that is fair to all, and especially for District 6.
Scott Jones?
Thank you. This is not the Scott Jones Priority Plan. This is the District 6 Plan. I understand the importance of leadership in the district. I've worked with leadership throughout the district already. I'll reach out to the district leadership to come up with a one-to-end list of what their priorities are. And when we meet and establish that, then the district will set what those priorities are, and then we'll work with the city administration to gather the resources necessary for that. Thank you.
Tony Dugaisch?
Definitely the infrastructure. To keep that money in District 6, we have to use it for our sewer system. We have to use it for our sidewalks. We have to improve our park system. We have one park in District 6. My visit with the resident in that park, they have so many different issues. We have to improve things, and we have to make things better. Parks, sidewalks, traffic, that's where we're going to spend that money in. And definitely, we need more money to be able to do that.
And Josh Woods?
So top of the priority list, obviously, is dealing with the traffic infrastructure, how we go from here and there in District 6. But also realizing too that stormwater is not just in other districts. Stormwater is a major issue in District 6. A lot of stormwater starts in District 6 and ends up going elsewhere and ultimately into the bay. So that is an environmental issue as well. So addressing the storm issue, stormwater issue, looking at neighborhoods like Pinehurst, also a lot of neighborhoods off of Lloyd's Lane, addressing the issues of the fact that their backyards are being ate away by stormwater. So really addressing those issues, providing the traffic, fixing traffic infrastructure, and also addressing stormwater issues is a top priority moving forward. But I'm also reaching out to our neighborhood captains and seeing in our different neighborhood organizations and seeing what they need as well.
Our next question deals with parks in Mobile. This a 30-second answer as well. Does Mobile have enough parks? Are the parks it has properly equipped, maintained, and managed? We will start this round of answers with Scott Jones.
Thank you again. You know, we have a great park, Medal of Honor Park. We also have West Side Park that sits out in the western section of the county. We can always improve what we have, and, you know, I've talked to folks that have kids that play baseball out there. Lighting's an issue. But we can do better. You know, I had a neighbor recently move in, and their kid is 10 years old, wants to play baseball. He wants to play travel ball. And we lose tons of revenue by not having a facility that can host events here. So I would love to see a large venue where we could have baseball, soccer, basketball, et cetera. Thank you.
Next, Tony Dugaisch?
We have one park in the district. When you look further away, you will see a beautiful park. But when you talk to the people, and you ask the question, and you talk to every single person, they have issues. We have issues in this park. People did not have adequate lighting. They didn't have enough space to play soccer. People wait for hours and hours to be able to play their games. So definitely, there is issues, and that's why I'm here, to make sure to fix these issues.
Our next question, oh, sorry, actually, we are going to go to Josh Woods on that question next.
Yeah, we have the crown jewel, to me, the crown jewel of the city as far as parks are concerned, our only park, not a park in the county, but our only park in District 6, is Medal of Honor Park. Beautiful park. It meets the needs of many people in District 6. But also realizing too that we need more parks in there. Whenever District 6, and just like a suburban sprawl, it was not developed with pocket parks like other parts of the city have. And I realize that, and I really think that that's a priority moving forward and planning that we have to make sure get done.
And Darrell?
Thank you. Yes, I think Medal of Honor Park is a nice park, as with any, you know, park of that nature, you got to maintain things. And you also have to maybe do some scheduling issues with what you have there. But I know there have been times that some teams haven't been able to practice and things of that nature. But that could be more of a scheduling issue more than the actual park itself. But I think it's a beautiful park.
Our next question, diving even further into Medal of Honor Park. The park is one of the largest and most populated parks in Mobile. Some improvement projects are underway to improve the experience there, like a soccer field and a track. But what changes would each one of you like to see at the park? We'll begin this 45-second round with Tony.
Definitely, we have to fix the score panel, which has been out for the past year and a half. We have to increase the size of the fields in the park. We have to add basketball courts. We have to add so many different activity. Increase the size of the splash pad we have. You will have almost 100 kids play in the magnitude of small amount of a splash pad. So improvement, yes, it is a great park, but we have to improve it. And I will be the one who's going to advocate to bring companies, city money, to make sure that we have more advanced park in that area.
Scott Jones?
Thank you. Just about everyone in District 6 and outside of District 6 uses Medal of Honor Park. It's a state-of-the-art facility, and yes, there are some improvements that we need, which is another reason why we need CIP funds in this district. You've got baseball, softball, soccer, tennis, playgrounds, splash pad, dog park, walking trails, and there's something there for everybody. With that said, I would love to see a skate park like we have downtown come out there. I mean, that is widely used, and we have a lot of youth that would love to have a facility like that. Basketball courts, you know, lighted basketball courts that, you know, would go along with the tennis courts would be great. So yes, let's expand and open it up. But, you know, it is absolutely a great facility that is enjoyed by many.
Josh Woods?
So first off, I think that more covered areas, more covered spaces where people can gather, that's a big issue at Medal of Honor Park. We have limited amount of covered spaces. You can't rent them because it's limited amount, so it's kind of a first-come, first-served type of situation. Would love to see a skate park, also a basketball court, but ensuring that things are fixed there, whether it's the restrooms or whether it's making sure the splash pad functions, that's a top priority as well. But also, little known that we do have a disc golf course out there. So keeping that in mind, as we're continuing to plan and we're continuing to grow that park and that area, keep in mind, there is a disc golf course there that we have to make sure that we preserve and ensure that it continues to service the citizens of District 6.
And Darrell?
Thank you. I realize we live in a football state, but I'm kind of surprised that there's not any basketball courts out there. So I think that would be a definite improvement, as other things have been stated. But just to add that on and bring that extra activity there for people to indulge in would be good.
Our next question deals with schools. This is also a 45-second response. What are your opinions on the public schools in District 6? And what, if anything, should the city be doing to work with the school system? We will begin this round with Tony.
School system. We are ranked in the bottom 50 in the state of Alabama. In the bottom 50, we have major issues. My job to advocate, working with the school public system and school board, to increase the quality of the school systems we have. Private schools are excelling. Public schools are dropping. We cannot be and continue to be in the bottom 50% in the whole state of Alabama. Businesses going to run away. Executives, they want places for their kids to grow and to go to good schools. We cannot continue having school system that is failing. We have to balance. We have to balance and make sure we have a better school system.
Scott Jones?
Thank you. This is definitely an issue, and I go talk to people throughout the district, that we need to improve on. need to improve on is the public school system. I taught for a year at Murphy High School, and I saw this firsthand. A lot of the things that I went to high school with at Viger don't exist today. The trade schools are not there. Auto shop, wood shop, carpentry, electrical school, welding, all of those things need to be brought back in. We have a port that employs hundreds of people from Mobile, thousands of people. I think it's 50,000 people that are hired at the port. We can readily have kids available with jobs, but we're so focused on just graduating and not the quality of the student, that has got to change. We need to graduate kids that can read and write at the 12th grade level. Thank you.
Darrell.
Thank you. The school system, like most organizations, is really going to be dependent upon the people that work there, and most teachers take jobs knowing that they're not going to get rich, but they also shouldn't have to suffer financially. I think if we can put more into our employees in the school systems, we'll see better results from them teaching and the students learning and them being more engaged. It's just, I got two daughters that are teachers, and one's already leaving the school system in Mississippi, going into social work. I said, well, you might be much better there, but it's just, when you're not getting paid well, you start to look at other places, and if you're looking at other places, you don't do your job as well. So, and I know there are a lot of teachers that do a great job nonetheless, no matter what is going on, but I'm advocate of paying people what they're worth.
And Josh Woods.
Thanks. So, obviously, ever since April, we've talked about the future of what the city looks like, what District Six looks like. A major portion of that future, the primary driver of that future of what's going to happen in five, 10, 15, 20, 25 years, and District Six and across the city has to deal with our kids that are in school today. While it's a Mobile County public school system, I have every faith in the new superintendent, and I look forward to seeing what he's changing. I have seen some of it. We went to meet the teacher night last night and had the opportunity to see the new changes that are happening for our kids. So, I'm very excited about those changes and the future of what it looks like. As far as the city council is concerned, I believe continuing to partner on partnerships like, we have kids, we have high schoolers that are learning to build airplanes. We have high schoolers that are graduating, and they have certifications to go into nursing programs. Continuing to support those from the city side of the house and support our county public school system is a big driver of what we need to do for the future of District Six and the city.
Our next question deals with tourism. The city supports Visit Mobile to the tune of $2.7 million a year with COVID, threatening the future of the convention and meetings business. What should the city's focus be when it comes to tourism? We'll begin this round with Scott Jones.
Thank you. You know, I had some great friends come in just this weekend, and they stayed downtown, and they were putting pictures on Facebook all night long, and we had the opportunity to take them to breakfast the next morning. They could not stop talking about how great our city is. We have all of the things that people look for when they come to go tour a city, and we've got the eateries, we've got the big oak trees, the antebellum homes, the amazing food that I love. You've got the Bayway, you've got the Battleship. So, the list goes on and on, and we must keep our city moving forward to bring these tourists back in after we've had the year hiatus with COVID. We cannot shut down again. Thank you.
Darrell Pendleton.
Thank you again. Yes, tourism is definitely a strong point in Mobile, and we do need to maintain the status that we have achieved and keep moving forward, bringing in new ideas and working with the people that can help us expand those ideas of, you know, like with the walkway downtown, I think is what they're calling it, that they're looking at doing. It's supposed to bring in a lot of tourism, so it's definitely a needed thing, and we just need to maintain and keep doing it. Thank you.
Josh Woods.
So, I have the opportunity to work with Visit Mobile throughout the year with my job at the grounds and the Greater Gulf State Fair. One of the things that we do a great job in Mobile is we bring in conventions, and they love being downtown because the hotels are there, the restaurants are there, the nightlife's there, there's entertainment down there, so that's a great thing that Visit Mobile's done and capitalized on as Mobile continues to grow. But as far as the city as a whole, I think one area that we have to focus on is sport tourism. You look over across the bay, and they did a really great job of building a soccer complex when a soccer complex was needed, and they've capitalized on that. There's one area that I think in Mobile, we have to think outside the box, we have to continue to recruit, and we have to find, if we're committed to really bringing in tourism and predominantly sports tourism, we have to find what that next thing is, and we have to prepare for that and be ready to accept those people and line it out. So, sports tourism's a big thing that I think Mobile can capitalize on.
And Tony.
As a former president of the Hotel Motel Association, as a former president of Visitor and Convention Bureau, I understand tourism. Mobile is the city that I fell in love in. That's why I stayed here. I moved with the hotel business from Anchorage, Alaska to Cayman Island, and I settled in Mobile. This city has so much potential. We implemented a penny tax from every head and bed to go toward tourism funds. Mardi Gras, different football games, senior bowls, all these bring the city, bring people to our city, and thrive the tourism around.
Our next question is going to be a 30-second answer. It deals with city-supported events. So, what should the role of the city be in financially supporting entertainment and sports events like college bowl games and classics, the moon pie drop, or Bay Fest that no longer exists? We'll begin this round with Darrell.
I think the city should always be involved in the different activities that are coming to the city because they will benefit from it, just like the businesses that are doing the opportunities and the, it's, I don't see how they could lose by not being more supportive of it. So, I think they should just, you know, support the businesses and the activities that are coming.
Josh Woods.
So, I believe the city, being fiscally conservative, that's what I, financially, that's how I approach things. While I believe that the city should support events, and the city should do things to promote those, bring people in from outside the city, I think there needs to be an initial mark where the city says, we're going to support it this much, we're going to provide that seed money, a little bit to help you, and then we're going to reassess it moving forward. If it's not bringing money into the city, if it's not making money for the city, you know, you have that responsibility back to the taxpayer, that what are you spending our money on? So, definitely, that's one thing, initial seed, revisit it later, and continue to support the events in some way and form.
Tony.
When we spend $900,000 on one event, we expect at least to get 10, 20, 30 million dollars as a return. We have to be very careful where we're going to put our money in. Events definitely brings money, but we have to be not conservative, but we have to do our study. Lending tree, we spend $900,000. Why? Should we spend that much money in one event? We should spread that in a variety of different areas.
And Scott.
Thank you. I'm also a conservative, fiscally conservative candidate here, and I love Mobile, and I think there's times when we need to celebrate as a city, the Fourth of July, New Year's. Those things are great, and I think when you have an event where mass taxpayers can come together and celebrate the city, let's put the money behind it. Like others have said, I agree with. Let's do the risk reward. Let's take a look at things, and if it is financially feasible and responsible to invest in an event coming here, then by all means, let's do it, but let's do our homework first and not get the bills coming after that that we really didn't expect. Thank you.
Our next question is a 45-second answer. South Alabama and the Senior Bowl have moved out of Lad People's Stadium to be held at Hancock Whitney Stadium on USA's campus. What do you see for the future of Lad People's Stadium, and what are your thoughts on more sporting events being held in District Six? We'll begin this round with Josh.
Yeah, so Lad not being in District Six, as far as my opinion, that's something we need to take a look at. We need to decide what we're going to do, how we're going to do, and what we're going to do moving forward on that. Lad's a beautiful stadium, very historic. Definitely want the community's input moving forward so that we can make an educated decision on what we, how we address that and what we do. On the University of South Alabama, as you noted, they just built the stadium. It pretty much is across the street from District Six for the most part. Really want to support what they're doing out there. Real excited about finally being able to go to a South Alabama game at a South Alabama stadium. Looking forward to that. But as far as District Six is concerned, I think there's a lot of ancillary ways we could support South. Looking at the sports tourism side of the house that we just talked about, there's some area, there's some land, especially if we grow through annexation in areas like that, that there's large swaths of land where potentially we could execute a project like that if it made sense.
Tony.
Lad Stadium, it's a big expense for the city. Nobody is using it right now, but we have something called the Sport Authorities that we let them, let the Sport Authority bring more functions to the Lad Stadium. Let's revise. Let's bring more functions. Let's bring more sports. Let's bring more football teams, and let's have the Sport Authority specialized, let's have the Sport Authority to handle Lad Stadium. So, this way, you'll have one company that will bring and focus on Lad Stadium and make it thrive like it used to be.
Scott.
Thank you. Look, I have been on the field at Lad with my ROTC cadets and watched the Murphy Football Team play out there. I love the area, and I don't have the answers for what should happen, but what I do have are some facts. I'm a personal friend with the board president, the Lad People's Board, who has diligently worked to improve Lad and change its image, and I just want to share some facts. In the last year, the city and county have spent over $2 million making safety issue upgrades, adding a walking trail, a dog park, and new locker rooms. The board, along with the Michigan group, have hosted a successful concert, hosted all the high school graduations. They're going to have more football games all throughout the fall. There's events that they have planned. So, the board has done a great job. I think we need to defer to them and let them keep running with this one. Thank you.
Darrell.
Thank you. Yes, I think one of the concerns with Lad Stadium was that it would take too much to build it back up, but my question is, this didn't happen overnight, so why would we abandon them? In that area, a lot of people with the activities that are going on kind of look forward to having things that bring income to them in that area that's kind of depleted of income. So, it kind of, not only does it take away from Lad Stadium, it also takes away from that neighborhood. So, I think that we can share the wealth. I'm glad South Alabama has a new stadium. My son went there. I have nothing against South Alabama. It's just that I think, to be fair, we need to try to not snatch everything away from Lad Stadium at one time, but kind of balance it out.
Our next question deals with the Gulf Quest Maritime Museum. It cost the city $43 million to build, and despite being a world-class facility, it's been a flop with the public. So, what do you think the city should do with this property, keeping in mind there are restrictions owing to the use of some federal transportation funds? We will begin this 45-second answer round with Josh Woods.
So, Gulf Quest, hindsight's 2020, but it is, it has been a drain on the city. The city's been expected to step up or had to step up numerous times to try to make it, move it forward from the construction to the operation. One thing that I personally would like to see is various public-private partnerships explored. We're, you know, I'm sure we'll talk about the Civic Center shortly. Those have been kind of floated out and taken a look at over on the Civic Center side of the house. As far as the Gulf Quest is concerned, looking at that, but also realizing that there has to be some sort of transportation dynamic involved in that. So, you know, keeping that in mind, but also really just exploring public-private partnerships and seeing what we can do about that.
Darrell.
Thank you. Yes, at the point of being repetitive again, I think because of, you know, what is the danger of costing the city money, if it's not used for what it was intended, we have to find some ways of getting revenue from it, maybe from other business adventures or things of that nature, just so that we don't actually lose money in that facility.
Scott.
Thank you. You know, I really hope that we, as a city, learned a valuable lesson with this issue, and that is, every dollar the federal government wants to give us is not a good dollar. Some things we need to read the fine print on, and we need to push back on, and this is one of those. I don't have the answers for this either. This is something that I think needs a team approach. We need to get with the Chamber of Commerce. We need to get with the tourism folks. We need to get with the people of Mobile. We need to put our heads together. We have a lot of smart people in the city. Let's figure it out and see what we can really do with that to really complement the great things that we have in the city that will bring folks in. Thank you.
And Tony.
$43 million of waste of your money and my money. We have to make sure when we're making these decisions to build these facilities, to understand what the city need. Now, we have a building that have no use. There's opportunity, but also, what can we do? We cannot continue wasting money like this. We have to do the correct studies before we bring any project to the city. What we're going to do with this building now? There's several opportunities. Casino, Amtrak area, welcome center, so many different ideas that we have to come up together.
Our next question is a 30-second answer focusing on Amtrak. The city of Mobile has promised $3 million to help bring Amtrak service back to the area, but Amtrak has gone back on a promise to conduct a study on what impact its use of tracks would have on commercial rail service. Should Mobile subsidize the return of Amtrak service? We will start this round of 30-second answers with Darrell Pendleton.
Thank you again. This one, I'm kind of, you know, I don't like to make up answers, so I'm not well-informed on all of it, but my, just in the light of recent events like we just talked about, is it really going to make money for us to do that? And if that's the case, then I would be for that.
Next, Scott Jones.
Thank you. My wife and I rode Amtrak from Jacksmore, Florida to New York City for our 25th anniversary a number of years back, and we loved it, but I am not willing to derail the port logistics at the expense of Amtrak. Mobile offered up $3 million to gain an understanding of the true impacts and needs, and Amtrak reneged on that offer. The presidential budget for FY '22 for Amtrak alone is $2.2 billion. If you want to come to Mobile, lay the necessary track and infrastructure, but don't derail our $25 billion a year industry for Alabama. Thank you.
Tony.
Tourism, you have to have Amtrak. You have to have the Carnival Cruise. Amtrak is essential, and we have to have it for your family and for my family. Studies, like I said, we cannot spend the money without do the correct studies, and that is one of the things I will be discussing with my people in my district, to know if this is something we have to do. But absolutely, it will help the tourism in the city, and I am all for it.
And Josh Woods.
So, the city council and the city of Mobile overall did open, did offer up some money to the Southern Rail Commission to try to provide for a study to be done. We're still waiting on that study. The question revolves around subsidizing Amtrak. I don't believe in subsidizing Amtrak to bring it to Mobile. It's definitely, you know, without the study, can't give you a full opinion, can't give you numbers, and can't tell you what the impact on the port is, but what I can tell you is it is going to impact our port. It is going to impact trade, not only for Mobile, but also for pretty much the whole Southeast and really United States as a whole. So, at this point, not in favor of subsidizing Amtrak until they can prove otherwise that it's not going to affect our port.
All right. Well, congratulations. We are halfway through this forum here for District Six. Our next question should be a pretty easy answer. It is about our mayoral endorsement. Who will you vote for for mayor and why? You will each get 30 seconds, and we'll start with Scott.
Thank you. I don't think it's appropriate for me to endorse any candidate for mayor, but let me be very clear, I will work passionately with whoever is elected to ensure that this city moves forward with the full support of the city council, which is something that has not happened in the last few years. Thank you.
Tony.
I concur. I will vote for all of them. They're all my friends, and I wish whoever's going to win the best, and I definitely will be working with them hand in hand to make it a better city.
Josh.
So, no one's asked for my endorsement, but I will tell you that I'm not going to give that out or say anything about that, because... to give that out or, or say anything about that, because regardless, whoever's elected, I'm, I'm going to continue to work with them, or I'm going to work with them to better serve the city and the district, the residents of District 6. I will say that one of the candidates on the ballot in 2013, I did go and knock on doors for them because I believed in that vision of the future, actually what's kind of spurred along in, in my mind of where we can go as a city and what we can do as a people of Mobile. So, you know, with that in mind, I'm, I'm pushing forward with our campaign to represent District 6.
And Daryl Pendleton.
I, I do have an idea of who I'm going to vote for. I have not come to a conclusion, but I know that I can work with anyone. One gift that I do have is I am flexible, not necessarily pushover, but I can work with anyone, and, and so either of them I think would be good candidates. I've got it narrowed down to, I'll just say I've got it narrowed down to two, so, and leave it at that.
All right, our next question, also a 30-second answer. It's about city pay raises during the coronavirus pandemic. No city employee missed a paycheck. Mayor Stimson has prom, has proposed giving city employees a $5,000 bonus out of the city's CARES Act money. Do you agree, or should the funds go to others more impacted by the pandemic, or should they go to other city projects? We'll begin this round with Tony.
I agree 100%. The city employees, they deserve the $5,000 raise. They worked through the pandemic, they did not miss days, and the city was functioning 100%, and I applaud them for that. So I am for the raise 100%.
Josh.
Yeah, so today, that, that was, that came before city council approving the buckets and, and everything like that. What I can tell you is that District 6 would have had a vote today for the, for the city employees. They deserve that, that, that bonus. They worked tirelessly throughout the pandemic, and, and they deserve that bonus. But also, not only do they deserve that bonus, they deserve a raise. So I think the city council has to find a way, find, find a way somehow to make sure that the budget moving forward includes, includes some sort of raise, whether that's an initial raise and a cost of living adjustment moving forward, or we, or whatever that looks like moving forward, we have to make sure that we, we provide for our employees because they provide for the city, the city people.
And Daryl.
I am certainly for raises, and I'm glad to hear that those employees got bonuses because they deserve it. I think as stated, that we need in the future to make sure that we can consistently give them better pay. I just believe better-paid employees do better work.
And Scott.
Thank you. I, I also am glad that, that the raise went, or the bonus went through, correction. I would have structured this a little bit different, though. I've been working from home since COVID started back in March of last year, and I think a lot of city employees worked from home. While others were out on the front lines of COVID and putting themselves at risk, I would have liked to seen a, a graded measure for the ones that had the most risk, get a little bit more of the bonus money because they were truly out there on the front lines. But I'm glad that it was applied across the board, and I would like to see as well our city employees taken care of, especially the police and firefighters out there. Thank you.
Our next question is question 17, dealing with inclusion and diversity. Has the current administration done an adequate job of representing the diversity of the city in its appointed positions? We will begin this 45-second answer round with Tony.
I believe they did a very good job. I believe we still have some things that we need to accomplish. We need to see some more diversity in the city council. I am the best example that we'll bring to the city council to show that diversity. So the current mayor, he definitely did his best, and I applaud him for that.
Scott.
Thank you. This, you know, there was a concert in the park back in May that I went to at Medal of Honor Park, another one of those great events, and it was absolutely exciting to see the diversity that we had there, and it was from all over Mobile. It wasn't just District 6. And everybody was together, everybody was socializing, everybody was connecting, and I think the mayor is responsible for getting us there. I've seen a lot of events just like that across this city that, that he has really pushed, and I am proud of that. Again, we've got to stop the division, we've got to stop the race-baiting, we've got to come together as a Mobile united force and move this city forward. Thank you.
Daryl.
I can honestly say, from the time Mayor Stimson has been in office over the years, that it has become more and more diverse. I believe that it still has more room to continue in that direction, and I'm sure it will with whoever is elected, because it's, it's an issue now that people are recognizing, but I think it's, it's been very good for Mobile.
And Josh.
I believe that the current mayor's done a great job of, of appointing people and representing the, the diversity of the city. Really am proud of all the, the way we've came over the last eight years, of, of the people that are being represented across the board. It really does, to me, I applaud the job that's being done, because it does resemble what, what the makeup of Mobile looks like.
Mobile's government is set up so that a supermajority, five of seven votes, are required to pass most council business. The system was established to protect African-American rights with four of seven districts being majorly white. After the 2020 census, when districts are redrawn next year, four districts might have a majority of black voters. If so, should the supermajority remain in place? We'll begin this round of 30-second answers with Scott.
Thanks again, and I'll go back to my previous answer. We have got to stop dividing the city by race. We should be dealing with issues of the city. The supermajority sometimes is probably a good thing, sometimes it's probably not a good thing. Regardless of any of those, the Zogby Act lays out what we have to do and the rules and, and regulations we abide by. With that said, race should never be a factor in that. Let's get to the business at hand, move this city forward. Thank you.
Daryl.
Thank you. I was, I would say, based on my own experience, that the Supermajority Act was put in place not to divide color, but to make sure that all people would have equal access to what is going on in the city. I think the way it's set up now is a good thing. From what I can tell, the direction it's going in, I think it should probably remain in place, just because a lot of us think that we don't have issues with race and color, but the real issue sometimes is culture, and we just blame it on race and color. And so until we learn to get along with our cultures, then we can probably move forward stronger, but I'm, right now, I'm still for the Supermajority Act.
And Josh.
So obviously, it's a form of government that, that was implemented and, and is in place, and it has served us well, I believe, over the years. At this current time, I, I believe that it, it's working fine and it's working well, but I'm definitely not opposed moving forward to looking at what that looks like, especially as we grow our city into the future. Our, our city's going to be expanding, there's going to be, there's going to be lots of transitions that are going to take place, and there's already transitioning taking place across the city. The city looks different than it did 10 years ago, 15 years ago. So definitely something that I'm open to exploring, but you know, at the current time, I think our form of government's working fine.
And Tony.
The Zogby Act on it, it was done correctly, and it's a referendum. So if nobody want to use it, we have to vote for it, and it's a law. But definitely, the city is moving forward, and if we'd like, if no, if nobody want this act to continue as a supermajority, to become the law, it's a referendum, we can vote for it, and we can either accept it or decline it. But so far, it's working, and it's working fine.
Our next question is a 30-second answer as well. The current administration has built a surplus of tens of millions of dollars over the last eight years. How do you balance the need for a rainy day fund with spending money collected from taxpayers now for current needs? We'll start this round of 30-second answers with Daryl.
I'm all for having money for a rainy day, but it would be like very sad for something that we need to do today that would fall off, fall off or be destroyed, because we're saving something that might happen in the future. But I just think it's a matter of good planning. If we've got a surplus and things are going well, then certainly we need to put some aside for a rainy day, but I know there's two or three issues in the city right now that are like way, way behind that we could probably put some money into and bring it up to, up to par.
Josh.
So by law, we're required to maintain 40 to 45 million dollars in reserve. We, we've accomplished that. I also am very, very leery, are very knowledgeable in the fact that you never know when a 2009's going to come back around, or a 20, or 2001's going to come back around. So definitely maintaining a, a little bit above that surplus and ensuring that we have that rainy day fund, not just what's required by law, but also there, you know, some of that, that money that, that we've built up and accumulated, we, we need to put it to work, we need to, to pay our employees better, we need to make sure that the fire department and the police department employees are, are being able to, to, to support their families.
Tony.
Definitely the mayor, he did a very good job by having the surplus, but we cannot have big surplus while we have buttholes, infrastructures. We have so many issues need to be done as an infrastructure in my district and the whole entire cities. So we can have just $40 million, but we have a reserve over $159 million in reserve. We have a lot of issues we need to take care of. Thank you.
And Scott.
Thank you. Look, that reserve goes directly to our credit rating as a city, and is extremely vital to our ability to bring in business, great jobs, and, and more grant money, et cetera. So we've got to protect that money. With that said, I do think we have an abundance of surplus that we do need to prioritize, and I think that can be done across the districts. We do have to look at the pensions for our fire and police, take care of those that have served us faithfully, and give back where they deserve to be given back to. Thank you.
Our next, all the rest of our questions are all going to be 30 seconds each. Our first one here, violent crime. Mobile is on pace this year to have the highest number of murders in a decade. Many of these crimes are being committed by teenagers. What can be done from a city standpoint to address this problem? We'll begin this round with Josh Woods.
Yep, so definitely making sure that the community are being an advocate on the, on the city council, ensure that the community's involved. Public safety is a team sport, requires the officers, requires the public safety employees, but also involves the community stepping up to the plate, so being an advocate for community involvement. As far as the youth concern, really ensuring that, that the city council's supporting things like the Boys and Girls Club, very passionate about and have a heart out there for, for working with, with those, those folks. Supporting organizations that are, that are taking our youth in, mentoring them, and, and taking them off the streets, I think is going to be key for, for what the city needs to do.
Tony.
We have issues with our education system. We have issues in our schools. We have issues that have to be handled with the school system, so this way we can keep our kids busy. Your family and my family, your kids and my kids have to stay busy after-school programs. We have to support the YMCA, Boys and Girls Clubs. We have to support these organizations to keep our youth busy all the time.
Scott.
Thank you. Violent crime's an issue that demands a united front from different areas. First, we need to address the mental health issues that resides in the prisons. By doing this, we move folks out where they receive proper care and treatment, and we free up additional resources for violent, that we can take care of violent offenders. Second, we've got to reform the justice system to stop allowing violent crimes to walk away out of a long-term jail sentence after a very small fraction of their sentence. Lastly, we've got to stand behind our police and continue to give them the resources they need, as well as bringing back community policing. We've got to unite our neighborhoods and our police in a network that prevents crime. Thank you.
Daryl.
Yes, violent crime is a serious problem, and if I had to answer that, I'd be running for mayor instead of city council. But the problem is, and from my experience is that we've got to have some way of drawing people. I think a lot of this activity starts with gang violence, of things of that nature, trying to satisfy friends, but we've got to have some kind of change at the bottom level of what keeping these people busy, and it's, it's a hard question to answer, but it, it certainly needs to be answered.
Police body cameras. Starting in 2015, Mobile purchased 500 body cameras for its police officers, but earlier this year, there were two police-involved shootings, and in neither case was an officer involved wearing a camera. The city's purchased 300 cameras since in the name of transparency, and yet the Mobile Police Department will not make any of the video available to the media or to the general public. What would you recommend be the rules for wearing body cameras and for the availability of the video? Again, a 30-second answer. We'll begin with Josh.
So obviously transparency across the board, given city, city, the city's concern from city council to employees, it, it's very vital that we're transparent. I encourage anytime there's an interaction between a police officer, our public safety individual, and, and also the community, that, that, that footage is, is there and it's, it's obtained and it, it's, it's taken. But I also realize the fact that, that there's litigation a lot of times when there's incidents, and things have to be worked through a process. So really informing the public of what the process is, when, when the public will be able to really see that, and also maybe bring in some sort of a, a pre-designated community group to, to take a look at that along with the officers.
Daryl.
Yes, I think, for one thing, the officers should wear the body cameras since we have provided it for them, but as far as the release of that information to the public, transparency is a good thing, but it's kind of a two-edged sword. If you let it out too soon, you, you could do more damage than good, so you want to make sure that, you know, the timing is right and that everything can work in what's best for the whole situation, not just when people want to know answers and, and are impatient. We're pretty, pretty much impatient if people want answers right away. So we just have to be patient with the process.
Scott.
Thank you. I talked about this with a police lieutenant friend of mine I've known for 35 years, and he's a very respected member of the force. This is not about cameras, it's about trust between us and the police officers. The cameras are there, we need them, but we need to understand the cameras don't pick up the whole truth. They're stable. That police officer is moving, and that camera does not see through the eyes of the police and the ears of the police everything that's going on. But we've got to get back to a level of trust between the people and the police, and media absolutely should be the last to get the video after everything's gone through litigation. Thank you.
Tony.
I was the only candidate who entered the police department and asked that question, and the best answer I got, every police officer right now in Mobile who's been newly hired, it's become part of their uniform. So they are used to it. Transparency is very important, but we have to control who will watch these videos, so this way we cannot create issues in our community. So we have to make sure that they are monitored.
Our next question, dealing with homelessness. Mobile has a significant homeless population downtown as well as around the I-65 area. What should the city's approach be when it comes to dealing with homelessness? Should more affordable housing come to District 6? We'll begin this 30-second answer round with Daryl.
Yes, homelessness is definitely a problem. I think one of the main problems is that some of the homeless people don't want any different, they just want to have, you know, things handed to them, but that's not the case for most of them. So we definitely need to find a way that we can work things out, get them brought back into society, make them productive citizens again. I think it can be done, but it's going to take a strong effort and, and training.
Scott.
Thank you. You know, the thing we need to do is figure out what the issues are, and I lived in Hawaii for a year, and what I saw was when you give them more, more will come, and that has to stop. They have mental illnesses. Again, we need to figure out who has mental illnesses, get them off the street. Some are out there because of bad luck, and they lost a job. Let's find a way to get them back into serving the community and, and back into functioning jobs again, and get them back on the right path. Some of it is, is personal choice, but we need to facilitate the engagement with nonprofits, and I think we can go a long ways to correcting this, this issue. Thank you.
Tony.
Nonprofit organizations have to be involved in this issue, and I'm very advocate to support the nonprofit organizations. We cannot in the city just devote it 100% time for this issue, and that's where come the nonprofits. They're gonna analyze the issue, find solutions, and then we as a council will help to make these decisions.
Josh.
I've had the opportunity to work with, with several nonprofits out, out at the grounds, depending on what type of events that they bring out, and, and a lot of those nonprofits affiliated with, with homelessness, they, they've described to me the issues. I mean, there's day homeless, there's, there's homeless where no one has a place to, to live, there's night homeless where they don't have a place to sleep. A lot of times, there's underlying issues, whether that's mental health, whether that's a, a physical issue. From the city council standpoint, sitting at District 6, really encouraging the city leadership to, to partner up with these nonprofits to ensure something's done about it, so that we, we confront it as a, as a whole, instead of just taking off these little issues.
The Bayway Bridge Project, it's been a hot topic on both sides of the bay for many years to help with congestion in the Wallace years to help with congestion in the Wallace Tunnel and on the Bayway. What should the city's role in construction of a new Mobile River Bridge and Bayway be? Another 30-second answer. We'll begin with Scott.
Thank you. 30 seconds is definitely not enough time to get to this one. Look, we have to do something. This is a problem. I think the solution that they're coming up with, as long as it remains the same with giving Mobileans and the folks over on the eastern shore the opportunity to commute back and forth without a toll is the right answer. We cannot reduce the lanes to three lanes on the causeway though. That is not going to be the solution. We got to find a better way. So thank you.
Tony?
We subsidize the bridges on the street through the gas money. So right now, we are advocating for electric cars. So where are we going to pay for this? So how the citizen of Mobile can afford to build $2.1 billion bridge? We have to leave this to the mayor and his team to make sure to bring the right answer. But for the city, us in our district, we have to divide it, we have to devote our money just for our district and our city itself.
Josh?
My opinion on the bridge, what's good for the city of Mobile is good for District 6 in this aspect. You know, being able to go across District 6, being able to transport goods and services across the bay, and for people across the bay to come to work in Mobile, something has to be done. I think we all agree with it. What does that look like? I don't know. There's about 20,000 plans out there, and it seems like it changes every week. But what I can tell you is that I support keeping and maintaining the existing routes as free routes across the bay without putting a toll on that.
And Daryl?
It certainly is an issue that, you know, has to be addressed, but when you consider the cost of everything that it's going to take to build it, to upgrade it, how are those costs going to be absorbed? Is the state helping out? City of Mobile are going to have to do it, and if there's money left, someone's got to pay. So I don't have an answer, but it definitely needs to be worked on, and somehow, something has to work out.
In the last 15 years, the city of Mobile has invested more than $200 million in economic development projects. Yet a majority of workers at Airbus, Ostel, and in the steel mills in Calvert live in Baldwin County. Baldwin is booming, some say on the back of Mobile. Should Mobile institute an occupation tax, as the city of Birmingham has done, to try to recoup some of this investment? We'll begin with Tony.
That's definitely no. And the reason for that, we're going to keep the people stay away from Mobile. We cannot have occupational taxes. We have to encourage people to come to the city. We have to find ways to bring cooperation to our city. If we're going to give these jobs, keep the companies here in Mobile, and everybody will go and live across the bay, it will be a big issue. We cannot do that. We will have the same problem what happened in Birmingham, so absolutely, I'm against it.
Josh?
I don't think punishing workers because of where they live is the key, and really the occupational tax is what that really does. The reason that these companies are locating in Mobile, the reason that they're coming here and they're growing and they're thriving and they're continually expanding is because we have the workforce. And to say that, you know, a blanket statement that everybody that works there goes across the bay and puts their head on the pillow, I think isn't the right statement. If we get into a squeeze and we say, well, you know, we need the revenue, we need to place an occupational tax, no. Annexation's our key to that. So let's continue to grow the city within and by annexing, and we'll move forward like that.
Daryl?
Definitely, we need to try to keep as much money in Mobile as we can because we have needs. But you know, people have the right to choose where they want to live, but sometimes there's consequences with your choice. So you have to realize, you know, that if you decide you're going to go over there and a toll comes up, then you're going to have to pay a toll because nobody made you move over there. You decided to. So it's something that needs to be looked at thoroughly and addressed in the future.
And Scott?
Yeah, I'm not for this. You know, I've talked to a lot of people about this, and overwhelmingly, the majority is that this is going to hurt us more than it's going to help us. And you know, we all have a common goal of building Mobile, and that is to get these corporations to come in. If we start putting taxes on top of them coming in, that's going to be problematic at best to getting them to come in. So at this point, absolutely not a fan of that. Thank you.
And our next question is dealing with litter. What do you think of Mobile's litter problem, and what can be done about it? How big of a priority should it be? We'll begin with Tony.
It's a cultural issue. We have to teach our kids. We have to have programs in schools. We have to have programs in churches, synagogue, mosques. We have to learn how to teach our kids to take care of and love our city. So by doing that, I think we'll be able to eliminate the litter problem, not just by putting signs to say, "Do not throw this away." And definitely, we have to teach our kids in all different areas.
Scott?
Thank you. First thing that needs to happen is we've got to be accountable for our own actions. Pick up behind yourself, if for no other reason, it's a direct reflection of who you are. With that said, for those who refuse, there's got to be consequences that have a penalty in place that they are going to have to pay. For some folks, that's the only way they're going to change their behavior. We've got to continue the neighborhood trash pickup and community efforts that are ongoing as well. Literally, thousands of pounds of trash are picked up by these groups, and they're to be commended for that. So thank you.
Daryl?
I think, as Scott just said, the main thing is that there has to be consequences. As long as people aren't suffering, if it don't hit them in their pockets, they're just going to continue to do what they want to do. But if it starts costing them, then they'll change the behavior. And anytime there's bad behavior, that has to be disciplined.
Josh?
For the most part, the water in District 6 flows down to the bay. You know, you can look at a map and you kind of see how the tributaries go. As far as litter is concerned, whenever you drop something in District 6, eventually it could possibly end up in the bay. It's a twofold process. I believe self-accountability, and we have to ensure that I teach my kids, my three boys, that it's not okay to throw stuff on the ground and leave it, and you know, we throw it away properly. But also on the enforcement aspect, we need to enforce it. We need to, as a city council, provide the mayor's office with the ability to enforce it by funding and allowing for them to hire up.
Our next question deals with coronavirus. Have you been vaccinated for COVID-19? And if not, why? We'll begin this round with Scott.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I'm not vaccinated, and what I do know is this issue must stop being political. Politics is killing people on both sides of this. Whether a person does or does not take the vaccine should not be based on a mandate that's given by the city or a corporation. It's got to be based on the doctor and that patient. Every person is different. We talk about following the science. Our bodies are science. So if we talk about it, let's do it. Thank you.
Daryl?
Yes, I have been vaccinated. I received vaccinations. And I think, just in my opinion, you know, as far as wearing masks, I mean, what does it hurt? If you don't want to wear a mask, I mean, what does it really hurt? I think some of the times, we get hung up on things that aren't really that important. So if it works, if it doesn't work, just, you know, follow along, and then, you know, in the long run, it'll probably test out to see that we don't need to do that. But it's easy to say, "I'm not going to do it." We just have a tendency to rebel automatically as people. We don't want to be told what to do. So we've just got to learn to follow the systems, whether they're thoroughly proven or not, and then we can look back and say, "That didn't work, so I'm not going to do it again," maybe. But I think we should follow the system.
Josh?
I have been vaccinated and definitely understand the point of it. It's turned into a political thing. You know, initially, it was said that get the vaccination so you don't get COVID. Now, it's, you know, you're more likely if you have the vaccine, have received the vaccine to not have the severe symptoms. And I understand everything that's around it, but what I can tell you tonight is, a good friend of mine is in the hospital right now on a ventilator. And one of the last things that he kind of said was, he would encourage people, even though he was unvaccinated, he encouraged people to get the vaccine. It is a self-choice. You have to make that decision yourself. But I would definitely encourage you to look at it holistically and kind of do what makes sense for you.
And Tony?
It's a personal choice. Nobody can force anything on us. Yes, I am vaccinated, my wife, my son, which is 12 years old, but it's a personal choice. If you see friends and family are dying, you have to take your vaccine, but nobody will force anything on you. Nobody should force anything on you.
All right, our last question here tonight. You all live in District 6, so what makes this district so unique, and why is it the best district in the city? We'll begin this last round with Daryl.
Well, I think the quality of life, even though we've stated that we can still improve it, is probably better in District 6 than most of the other districts. That's just the facts, you know, and people like the area. And even though we, you know, have the things that we want to fix and correct about it, for the most part, it's one of the best areas in Mobile to live in, and I love living there.
Josh?
District 6 is really the place where, to me, people want to live, and we've shown growth. My wife and I decided that we were going to raise our three boys there in District 6, or here, they are in District 6, we're not in District 6 right now, but in District 6. And we love the neighborhood aspect of it, the fact that it's, there's a majority, majority of neighborhoods make up District 6. We love that aspect of it. But honestly, it's the neighbors, just like the typical Mobile spirit. We come together, we get to know each other, and then we also realize that when people tell us we can't do something, we do it. In Mobile, we were told we couldn't build ships, and we continued to build ships. We were told we couldn't build airplanes, we continued to build airplanes. So really, that spirit that encompasses Mobile is alive and well in District 6, and that's what makes it great.
Tony?
My campaign slogan is "Keep District 6 Great." I love what I live. I love my neighbors. I love my neighborhood. I love the convenient that where is the shopping center around my house. And I love the trees. I love the weather. District 6 is the best district in the city of Mobile. We're going to keep it great. We're going to continue keeping it great. If you put me as your city council, I give you my assurance to do that.
And Scott?
Thank you. I love District 6, and I tell you, going over step by step for the last three months throughout the 39-plus neighborhoods of this district, it has been absolutely amazing to meet the awesome people that reside in District 6. And I think that's really what makes District 6 outstanding. On top of the great restaurants, Ali's, Poindexter's, et cetera, but it is convenient. I can get downtown, and in just a number of minutes, I can go west. I'm accessible to the interstates, et cetera. I've got South Alabama right out my back door, close to the new football field, et cetera. So it is an outstanding district and a beautiful part of Mobile.
All right, you will each have one minute for closing statements. We drew numbers, and so Daryl drew number one. We'll begin with you.
Again, thank you for having me tonight and being a part of this forum. I'd just like to say, as I've stated my entire time here during this campaign, is that I think the key to being a good city council person is being able to work with other people. We're not ever going to always agree on anything. We're always going to disagree with the mayor, but we don't have to be attacking each other. We can wait our turn on our proposals to come forth. So if we can work together and build unity, unity is something that is, that cannot be stopped. It's a sure sign of victory. There's numerous illustrations. So as a pastor, I'll just say this one real quick. They were going to build a bridge, tower to heaven, and God himself had to look down and say, "If we don't stop them, they're going to build a tower to heaven." That's just how strong unity is. So if we can stick together, we can make this thing work.
Tony?
Thank you, WKRG, AFC, and I am not from the azalea bushes, but I lived here for 21 years. I'm not going to be a career politician. I'm not going to sit for two, three, or four terms. I'm going to see the issues, I'm going to fix them. I'm a businessman, same like one of the leaders we have in our city right now. We saw the improvement. When you put a businessman, he'll find solutions to the problems. We cannot have the same problems over and over and over and sit and act. We have to work together. We have to be a unity. We have to work with our mayor. We have to make sure that we live in peace and harmony and make things right. Vote for Tony Dugais on August 24th. You can go to keepdistrict6great.com. Thank you for the opportunity and appreciate you. Thank you.
Scott?
Thanks to WKRG, the League of Women Voters, Mobile United, and Mobile AFC. Great job tonight, and thank you for doing this. Look, these are very critical elections for Mobile this election cycle. We've got three of seven city council seats they're going to change. Bess Rich is leaving this district after 19 years. She brings the education, the leadership, the passion, and the accessibility that District 6 demands. She sought me out because she thought she saw the same things in me. And I thank her for that because the opportunity that I've had these last three months has shown me why she loves this so much. I've got the education, the experience. I've got the mature leadership. I've got the accessibility to you in District 6. I've got the passion for you. I've got the passion for leadership. I've got the passion for excellence. I've got the integrity and the morals to put this all together. I would love your vote on August 24th. Thank you.
And Josh?
And again, thank you to Mobile United, WKRG, Mobile AFC. Thank you, Dana, for moderating. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to the voters out in District 6 and the city as a whole. I asked for your vote on August 24th. Based on my background, I, you know, I've spent 10 years in banking, now serve out as executive director of the grounds. My main job, one of the main things that I did, whether it was working on the credit side of the house with salespeople at the bank or in my current position, is to be a consensus builder and a consensus maker. And that's what I want to bring to the city council and to Mobile government. As far as why I ran, I want to serve. I know there's issues in District 6 that haven't been addressed and that have been talked about for years, and we haven't really addressed those. So I'm asking for your vote. I want to provide good government, great, make sure we have great neighborhoods, great communities, and also that ultimately leads to an excellent future. And how do we do that? Because I want to listen to you, I want to learn from you, and then I want to lead on the city council. So again, I ask for your vote. My name's Josh Woods. Ask for your vote on August 24th.
Thank you all so much for being here for this city council forum, and also thank you to the League of Women Voters, Mobile United, AFC Mobile, AT&amp;T, and Dorset Productions for sponsoring tonight's city council forum. The District 7 forum has been moved by one week to next Wednesday. That's August 18th. We will host the mayoral debate on Monday, August 16th. It's happening at 6:00 PM, and you can catch that live on WKRG News 5 and on wkrG.com. Thank you all so much for joining us again. Good night.